Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our caucus for the Monday, October 24th, 2022, La Guana City Council meeting. The caucus is an opportunity for the individual council members to ask questions about the agenda items. And to that end, we'll begin with that. The first six items are administrative, so we'll forego those. We'll start with number seven. And there are several agenda items that originated from our comptroller who's present this evening. And I, what I'd like to do is just invite Linda to briefly give a synopsis or a little statement on each of the agenda items that she submitted. And then if any of the council members want to ask any questions, they could do so after each, after each agenda item. Linda, it's all yours.
The first item I have relates to the request to engage allied CPAs to prepare a precursory audit and reconciliation of certain data that needs to be exported out of our current system prior to converting to the Tyler Technologies program. They believe that the maximum cost will be $5,000, and there are excess funds in our financial audit budget line, so that is already taken here.
Anyone have any questions on item number seven?
Is this in respect to, if I may ask, here, the council president? Getting all the information up to date, so you can put it in the system like we did, is number?
Exactly.
Number I asked about, we're responsible for doing 70s an hour.
Exactly.
So you still help that out?
This will definitely help.
Okay, it's only one of them. Thanks.
I'm sorry?
I'll be there.
Yes, but that's only a certain portion. Number eight addresses another portion.
All right, moving on to number eight.
Okay. Number eight, similar to number seven, prior to converting to the Tyler Technology software, there are certain payroll issues that need to be resolved. And this requests the engagement of the state comptroller, and there's no cost associated with that engagement.
Questions? Should I have a move on to item number nine?
Okay. Number nine is actually a duplicate. You can consolidate number 14 with number nine. Similar to the issues in our program, the assessor is also having certain issues that she would like to resolve prior to converting to a new software program. And the total cost is expected to be about $2,600. And there is an ordinance that funds the account in her budget code.
Anyone have any questions on either item number nine or 14?
Yeah, what are you gonna?
Basically, our system is an ARPA system, which is different than any other else's system, one that Linda uses. And what it is, it needs to be updated, and there are parcels that are not there, that they exist in the county site, and we need to mirror the county site. So I need to make sure that that happens, and that would obviously piggyback what she's doing with a whole new system. We can't move forward unless we have everything up to date in our system.
Is this the proper time to do most of this?
Yes.
Okay. Because when are we gonna start? Next year or something?
Well, I think that a lot of the issues might take a long time to resolve.
Okay.
So I think the sooner we can get started on it, the better.
I understand. Thank you.
In my case, December 1st, my role, tentative role needs to be run, and these parcels need to be in there for December 1st.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
All right, Linda, number 10.
Number 10 relates to the ARPA funds that we had received. We received half of it in the summer of '21, and the remainder in the summer of '22.
And would you tell us what the ARPA?
ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act in relation to COVID. It was grant funds issued by the government, and we were to segregate the funds until we started using them, which we have done. Well, at this time, we're starting to use them, so we'd like to move the funds into a capital fund account so we can track the spending. So that's what this relates to.
Anyone have any questions on item number 10? How much is in that capital?
1.8, a little over $1.8 million.
That's the two years' worth, right?
Yes.
We got 900 or something, one year, now?
Correct.
Okay, just for, so you know. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? All right, moving on to item number 11.
Number 11 deals with a firefighter's grant that Chief Fino applied for and received. It's the Assistance to Firefighters Grant, and it's through the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. And he has a quote for DEVOL, that's, I think, SCUBA, the tanks for the firefighters?
SCBA.
SCBA. And he has a quote for the tanks. And the total amount that will be awarded to us by federal funds is a little over $220,000, and we have a matching contribution requirement of $5,000. But based upon the quote that DEVOL provided, our contribution would actually be about 23% for about $53,000. So there's an ordinance attached to set up a budget code to track the grant fund spending and to fund the city's portion in that budget code.
Anyone have any questions on that item? We got item number 12.
In number 12, Chief Fino would like a second fire inspector for the fire department, and the stipend in that respect is $7,000. So there's an ordinance attached that just requests funding for that.
Anyone have any questions on item number 12?
So, yes, Mr. Council President. So we're just approving the fun, the funds?
No.
We're approving a job?
We're approving adding a second fire inspector and also funding it.
Do you have anybody in mind for that?
That I do not know. I would assume Chief Fino would.
Yeah, the bid is out. We'd actually eventually like to add a third one. We can't, right now, the inspector now cannot get told to, never could.
Is that just half the $70,000 added onto his salary?
Yes, that's the stipend for specifically doing that job.
So that's a full-time position?
I don't believe this one is gonna be full-time like ToJack. I could be wrong on that. I'd have to double-check with Jeff. But that's gonna be, assist the current one we have, just to get more of these.
So why wasn't that in the budget?
I wanna say that was requested in the budget, but then was possibly cut.
One is in the budget? I'm not sure what the situation was at that time.
Yeah. We, I'd have to double-check on that, Kevin. I believe it was requested at one point, but it might have been removed, I think, at one point.
So how are they, you don't, well, you don't know how they're, like, dispersed or?
It's gonna be posted. Oh, yeah, it's gonna be posted.
Remembered in or agreement with the union or anything?
Yep, there's gonna have to be posted, yes. Everything's gonna have to be agreed upon, and I believe it was, it was put up for bid about a year ago.
The other one?
With no stipend, and nobody put it in.
Oh, yeah, right.
And nobody put it in here. So to kinda entice and help out, so.
I believe extra training is required.
Yes, absolutely. Block school, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The next item, we had put some funds in the Buildings Alteration Code, and all of the alterations to the firehouse to accommodate being able to fit the new fire truck are complete, and there's extra funds remaining in that budget code. And Chief Fino would like to move a portion of the funds into his Normal Repairs to Buildings and Equipment Code, and he would also like to move the rest into the Fire Station Alteration, I'm sorry, Fire Training Facility Grant Code to cover the cost of additional fencing that they would like in conjunction with that project.
And that project's in the first award?
Yes.
Yeah.
The new, the new training facility that they're building.
Anyone have any questions on item number 13?
Just one comment. This, this was that line that I was asking about, remember?
Yes.
180,000, I thought it was gonna be?
Yes, that's exactly what it is.
16,000?
Yes. And actually, there's a little bit extra left over because we used some of the funds from the '21-'22 budget year to get a jump on the job. So that's why there's a little extra.
Just going back, the $7,000 for the inspector was already in the budget. That's just been transferred for one left over.
The second one was?
Yes.
Okay, I remember that.
I thought at one point it was taken out or something.
Okay.
It was already in there.
I also have three items that are a waiver to the rules request. Would you like me to jump into those as well?
I would.
Okay. The first waiver request deals with an insurance recovery by Public Safety Director Wolf. A car was totaled, the police car, and we received insurance funds for it, and he would just request that the amount that we received from the insurance be put into the police car's budget line so they can purchase another police car.
Anyone have any questions on that item? Next one, Linda?
The next waiver item has to do also with the request from Public Safety Director Wolf to increase the number of detectives on the current budget from six to seven. And there are ample funds within the Personnel Services Code for the Police Department due to retirement of a captain.
So is that job already filled, or is this?
We're gonna create a new position. We have currently six detectives, and we're gonna switch it to seven, and it's gonna be filled by someone that's currently working with a special, that has been working for years with the FBI.
So is that one of our patrolmen?
It's, it's one of our police officers, but not a current patrolman. He worked safe streets with the FBI.
So out of the four new ones, you're taking one of them to put in a detective, right?
This police officer's been on for, how many years on the job?
Over 20.
Over 20.
Oh, yeah, I know that.
Yeah.
The last item I have for the waiver deals with, oh, I'm so sorry.
That leaves an opening for our.
No, we're not, we're not increasing any of the numbers right now with the thing. We're, we're still gonna continue to push for each, each new police, police academy to add as many as we can, as, you know, as the budget allows us.
The last item that I have, Chief Fino, Fire Chief Fino, would like to sell various items of equipment, and once that is done, I'll follow up with the request, once we determine the proceeds from the sales, if it's authorized. And Chief Fino would like to take the funds and move them into his emergency equipment line. So I'll follow up with that one, it's complete.
All right, anyone have any questions on that item? All right, Linda, thank you very much. That saves us a lot of time, and thank you for being so well-prepared to go through those. Item number 14, we heard from our city assessor, Ann and Linda, regarding that item. Moving on to item number 15, from our city attorney, behalf of Mayor I followed, Best City Council, Fluehl, regarding attached roadway maintenance agreement between city and Erie County Industrial Land Development Corporation regarding a new roadway being constructed at the old Bethlehem Steel Site. Complete agreement is at the clerk's office. Anyone have any questions on that item? Our city attorney is not present?
I do.
Yes?
The maintenance of this road is responsible?
It would be ours, once it's dedicated to the city.
Not the company.
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Yeah. In fact, I think that new portion of donut was the same arrangement, was extended and then dedicated to the city. The city's got the obligation, maintaining and plowing and so on and so forth. All right, item number 16, from our Public Information Officer, Chuck Clark, Best City Council approved attached communication, renaming road be located in Renaissance, October Park as Steelworkers Way, by renaming the street in honor of the site's industrial history and the thousands who were employed during the steelmaking era. And Mr. Clark provided us with additional information and photographs regarding the proposed roadway that's being requested to be renamed. Anyone have any questions on that? Item number 16.
Mr. Council President, just for clarity, 16 and 15 are related.
Yeah. Anyone have any questions? Item number 17, under table items, business registration DBA Skolski Motors, that was table from a prior occasion. I wish that to be removed from the table for the council's consideration for issuing a business registration. I think all of us, if not most of us, have seen the site in question. It was, there's some research and investigation done regarding the potential paint hazards and so on and so forth. It was found out to be within regulations, and Mr. Skolski is present in our, in the seating in the, in the chambers here, and I would like to commend publicly, Mr. Skolski did a nice job with that quarter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, very nice. So we're gonna pull that off the table. Item number 18.
If I may?
Yes.
Mr. Solsky, I'd like to also compliment you on your, on your corner. It looks great. Get rid of all the cars, and hopefully, when we approve your license, it kinda stays at that. Do you understand, you know, I don't want, you know, 70 cars there?
Oh, yeah. Like I said, I was planning on that with the cleanup, and it's gonna be done, and this is?
Oh, it looks great.
I got a couple more things I still wanna clean up, and, but obviously, I'm running out of season now, so.
No, I understand.
So we'll, we'll, next year.
If I may, Mr. Council President, who reports how much paint you use a month?
Um, I actually, my, my computer in my, in my mixing station, it actually calculates everything, and then we just go ahead and submit it over to the DEC for their analysis, and that's.
I see you gotta do that within the next couple, December or something?
Yeah, we have to submit two months' work, but it calculates everything. We've, we've done minimum cars even, I mean, just regular right now, doing any kind of paint work anyways right now.
Yeah, well, you've been busy with other things.
Yes, yes.
You know, so who in the future, if you use 40 gallons a month, how does it get reported to the DEC?
The computer goes ahead and will actually give a printout of what we actually mix. Any formula that's typed in in order to make the paint goes into the system and says, hey, you mix this paint, and this is what you use.
Okay.
And there's, as I, as I found out now, knowing, you know, after talking to some people, I would never get nowhere near it. I'd paint a car every day, repaint, even get anywhere close to 20 gallons of paint a month.
That's good.
And I'm only doing ounces, you know, stuff up, actually now knowing the breakdown of the system after talking to the DEC rep. We are nowhere ever going to be, you know, and we will not, we don't paint with the doors open, we don't ventilate with the doors open.
Right.
You know what I mean? The one time, like, there was, last time we were here, there was a question of fumes that came out of the building, I actually remembered what it was. It was drywall dust. We were sanding in the paint booth, we had the door open, and we were trying to get the drywall dust out, and obviously, to somebody that didn't know, it looked like paint. It was drywall dust.
Right.
But I would never blindly go ahead and open a door, you know, let fumes into the air and with the neighbors at their windows.
All right. Well, you, you learned something from the DEC guys, and so did I.
Yep.
Now you could see what my concerns were, I hope.
Oh, yeah, that's, like I said, we both got an education on this one, you know, and I'm fine with that, you know? I opened, the guy stopped in, I walked him right over, showed him the whole operation, then hesitated, even he even looked in my 3244 location.
Right.
He saw that operation, and we are in across the board.
All right, well, that's weighed off my shoulders, so, like, you know.
Oh, yeah, like I said, I mean, I have no problem helping out as best as I can, you know?
I appreciate what you've done, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Bottom line is, you did a nice job, and we're all very appreciative, especially the neighborhood.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We got item number 18, and another item to remove from the table, regarding the application for the purchase of city-owned property 126 Thielawana to Ali Sala for the sum of $4,000. I believe we received communication from our city assessor, targeting the value at something like $6,500.
The assessed value.
Assessed valuation. Okay. Anyone have any questions or any issues? Yes. Are we gonna get an ordinance for that at some point? Well, Mr. Judah was gonna prepare that, I thought. That's why we didn't remove it from the table the last meeting and moved it till today.
Obviously, I can prepare an ordinance.
Well, as long, yeah, as long as we pass this, at least we can keep that part of.
Yes, because he's very anxious to pay for it and get started. He's been here multiple times.
Yeah, that's right here. Yeah, okay, very good, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I'm sorry to interject again, but.
All right.
I've got, if I may, ask our director of development, as far as that neighborhood, are they building a four-unit apartment across the street from there? Are they building houses around there?
That was approved at the planning board this year, yes.
This here is a buildable lot.
Correct. I'd say so.
So, I don't know, all right, well, I don't know.
To that, to that point, and I understand what you're saying, councilman.
Yeah, you know what I'm getting at.
Absolutely. That was discussed and looked at, because that came up with the mayor. And the point to be made, and that the public should know, is that this particular parcel of property has remained vacant for over 30 years, and nobody's even shown any interest in it. So now that we have somebody who's interested in it, I think we should consider possibly extending that courtesy.
And just to finally say, it is also adjacent to a piece of property he already owns.
Yes.
So it's very important.
Sure.
Very important, who else?
It's important when, when we're selling things, not that we don't sell to people who are the next street, for example.
Right.
But he owns the other property next behind it, so he wants to establish something so nobody put it back on the roll as vacant land. He plans on building a garage there.
Or garage, so?
So he'll go on the tax?
Tax money, more tax money on a house or a garage?
Well, always on it. I mean, in our status here, we do tax everything. Actually, a house would be worth more than a garage, but at this time, he's willing to do this, and we don't have anything else on the table for it after 30 years.
And that, yeah, and that's versus somebody who just bought the property for speculation.
Right.
They think it's gonna offer value or whatever, so they buy it and sit on it. That's not gonna be the case here. I understand. All right, anyone else? Moving on, item number 19, Business Registration DBA Superminion Market Corporation, 2730 down South South Park Avenue. If you recall, we tabled this matter because of the issue regarding a liquor license application. That is beyond our jurisdiction. That was something that was brought up by the planning board, or the zoning board, or whatever the case may be, and that, that's where the red flag came in, so to speak. But any approvals for that liquor license would be dealt with, well, investigated and inspected by the State Liquor Authority. So that item is, will be for our entertainment.
Yeah. Where is that built?
Right across 727. It's on the side.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, I remember. We, we had the last time. All right, I got it. I looked it up on my phone. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. That should do it for our caucus. It's about five minutes to seven. We begin our regular meeting officially at 7:00. Good morning, gentlemen. Evening again, everyone. I'd like to welcome our council members and department heads, public who is present, as well as any public watching, members of the public watching from home, and welcome and call officially to order our La Guana City Council meeting for Monday, October 24th, 2022, to order. We will begin by saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Mr. City Clerk, would you take the role, would you?
Absolutely, Mr. Council President. Council Muflahi.
President.
Anderson.
Here.
Moretti.
Here.
Surlick.
Here.
Morano.
Here.
Law Department's been excused. Development?
Here.
Public Works has been excused. Public Safety?
Here.
Comptroller?
Here.
Recreation has been excused. Public Information?
Here.
Sir, Jean, is there anybody on this sheet regarding?
Okay.
All right, so moving on to the approval of the minutes for the October 3rd, 2022 meeting.
Morano moves to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of October 3rd, 2022, as written.
Second, sir.
Motion by Morano, second by Surlick, to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of October 3rd, 2022, as written. Muflahi.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
350. Departmental reports 1 through 6.
Morano moves to receiving file, departmental reports 1 through 6 inclusive.
Moretti, sir. Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receiving file, departmental reports 1 through 6. Muflahi.
Yes.
Anderson.
Ready.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yeah.
Morano.
Yes.
350. Communications from Division Department Heads, number 7. Comptroller requests the city council review and approve the attached proposal from LICPA PC, formerly known as Amado Fox for Accounting Services, for proposal on file in clerk's office.
Morano moves to approve request.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to approve request. Muflahi.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
350. Number 8. Comptroller requests the city council approve the attached involvement and recommendation audit by the New York State Comptroller in conjunction with converting to the Tyler Technologies System, so lauded on file in the clerk's office.
Morano moves to approve request.
Muflahi, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Muflahi, to approve request. Muflahi.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
350. Number 9. Comptroller requests the city council approve the attached ordinance transferring funds to the budget code assessment consulting slash maintenance fees.
Morano moves to receiving file act on ordinance.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receiving file act on ordinance. Muflahi.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
350. The ordinance amending the 2022-2023 budget ordinance adopted May 23rd, 2022 by renaming budget code maintenance fee to consulting slash maintenance fees and transferring $2,600 to budget code assessment consulting slash maintenance fees.
Morano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Second.
Motion by Morano, second by Surlick, to adopt ordinance as written. Muflahi.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Surlick.[1695.33] Item number ten, controller requests city council approve the attached ordinance transferring received ARPA funds from the Budget Code Other Liabilities to a newly created Budget Code ARPA funds.
Marano moves to receive and file act on ordinance.
Ready, sir?
Motion by Marano, second by Moretti to receiving file act on ordinance. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. That ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget ordinance adopted May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two by adding a Budget Code for ARPA funds, then transferring one million eight hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and forty-three cents from the Budget Code for Other Liabilities and adding one million eight hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and forty-three cents to the Budget Code for ARPA funds.
Marano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Ready, sir?
Motion by Marano, second by Moretti to adopt ordinance as written. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. Number eleven, controller requests the city council acknowledge and authorize the acceptance of the assistance to firefighters grant and approve the attached ordinance establishing a Budget Code for Assistance to Firefighters Grant twenty-twenty-one.
Marano moves to receive and file act on ordinance.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Marano, second by Anderson to receiving file act on ordinance. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget ordinance adopted May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two by adding the Budget Code for Assistance to Firefighters Grant twenty-twenty-one and adding fifty-three thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars and sixteen cents to the Budget Code for Assistance to Firefighters Grant twenty-twenty-one.
Marano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Marano, second by Anderson to adopt ordinance as written. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. Item number twelve, controller requests city council approve the attached ordinance transferring funds for a second fire inspector in the amount of seven thousand dollars.
Marano moves to receive and file act on ordinance.
Anderson.
Motion by Marano, second by Moretti to receiving file act on ordinance. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. The ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget ordinance adopted May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two by transferring seven thousand dollars from the Budget Code for Training Schools Fire Department to the Budget Code for Personal Services Fire Department.
Marano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Ready, sir?
Motion by Marano, second by Moretti to adopt ordinance as written. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. Item number thirteen, controller requests the city council approve the attached budget ordinances, there's two, regarding the fire training facility twenty-twenty-one part of a DASN grant and fire department repairs to buildings and equipment.
Marano moves to receive and file act on ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Marano, second by Surley to receiving file act on ordinances. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. First ordinance is an ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget ordinance adopted May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two by adding Budget Code for Repairs to Buildings and Equipment, adding one hundred and six thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-one cents to the Budget Code for Repairs to Buildings and Equipment and reducing the Budget Code for Fire Station Alterations by one hundred and six thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-one cents.
Marano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Second.
Motion by Marano, second by Moretti to adopt ordinance as written.
Second.
Surley, my mistake, sorry. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. Second ordinance is an ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget ordinance adopted May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two by reducing the Budget Code for Fire Station Alterations by eighteen thousand five hundred dollars and adding eighteen thousand five hundred dollars to the Budget Code for Fire Training Facility twenty-twenty-two DASN.
Marano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Ready, sir?
Motion by Marano, second by Moretti to adopt ordinance as written. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Three, five, zero.
Marano moves to waive the rules.
Ready, sir?
Motion by Marano, second by Moretti to waive the rules. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. The first item under the waiver of the rules is from the controller. Request the city council approve the attached ordinance by transferring funds from the Budget Code Insurance Recoveries to the Budget Code for Police Cars.
Marano moves to receive and file act on ordinance.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Marano, second by Anderson to receiving file act on ordinance. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget ordinance adopted May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two by transferring thirty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars from the Budget Code for Insurance Recoveries to the Budget Code for Police Cars.
Marano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Ready, sir?
Motion by Marano, second by Moretti to adopt ordinance as written. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. The second item, also from the controller, request the city council to approve the attached ordinance, increasing the number of police detectives from six to seven.
Marano moves to receive and file act on ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Marano, second by Moretti to receiving file act on ordinance.
Surley.
Surley, walk in, say your name, please.
Thank you.
Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. An ordinance amending the police budget awards adopted May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two by increasing the number of police detectives for Budget Code Police Department Personal Services, police detectives from six to seven.
Marano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Motion by Marano, second by Anderson to adopt ordinance as written. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surley?
Yes.
Marano?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. Lastly, the controller requests the city council approve the attached request from the Fire Chief James Fino to sell the old fire equipment that is no longer used by the department. The equipment is as follows, two sets of extrication equipment, ladders that are more than twenty-five years old, scuba bottles that have exceeded their allowable use date and various hand tools that are no longer in date and used.
Marano moves to approve request.
Ready, sir?
Motion by Marano, second by Moretti to approve request. Muflahi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Surley?